Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, August 10. If you are watching live on Monday, August 10, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions. Our call-in number is 769-1677. As always, you can watch us live on Verizon or Cablevision Cable TV or on the web at PCTV76.org. And within a couple of days, you can pick up an on-demand webcast of this as well as past meetings at PCTV76.org. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 24 at 8:00 p.m., two weeks from today, with a work session preceding it at 7:00. So I had a couple of announcements to make. One is to report that Holy Innocence is hosting the Vacation Bible School that goes on every summer, and it's taking place at Holy Innocence from August 10 to 14. The reason I bring it up is that Holy Innocence is going to have exclusive use of the parking lot at Tompkins Avenue and Manville, that lot right at the corner between the Holy Innocence Rectory and the law office across the street from LaLoft and the other stores over there. That lot is actually owned by Holy Innocence, and they are generous enough to provide community use for it in exchange for our maintaining it. But it's their lot, and they occasionally have a special need, this being one of them. So the public cannot park in that lot on Tompkins and Manville this week, August 10 through 14, between 9:00 a.m. and noon after 12:00 p.m. It's back to the regular rules that normally apply. Wanted also to remind everybody, as we have a couple of times recently, but the fall weather season is coming. It is important to us that as many people as possible sign up for our emergency notification system. It's a subscription system we have contracted with called Code Red. We will only ever use it in the event of an emergency. We'll never use it for any other purpose. If we're lucky, you'll never actually see a communication from it. But if we have an extreme condition, as we did with Hurricane Sandy, it's an enormously beneficial way for people to stay in touch with what's going on and for us to communicate with you. You can sign up with email, with text message, with cell phones, with alternate landlines if you anticipate you might be elsewhere during a storm condition. So please go to the website pleasantville-ny.gov. In the left-hand column, click on the Code Red symbol and sign up for our emergency notification Also wanted to note that the county has been focused on Legionnaires' disease. As you probably have read in the news, there's been a Legionnaires' outbreak in New York City, and it has become more prominent elsewhere in the country. And so they have encouraged everybody who has any kind of cooling tower or condenser unit to pay special attention to keeping it clean. And there are comments on that available on the county website at westchestergov.com. I think that's the best place to go, is it not, Patty?
Department of Health website.
Yeah, at westchestergov.com.
And actually, they are offering free kits to test any cooling towers or condensing units on commercial buildings throughout the county. So you'd have to go to the county website. New York State Department of Health is offering free testing.
Great. And while we're at it, also a good season to get rid of standing water that might be accumulating in any kind of receptacles in your yard or whatever for the purpose of just getting rid of habitats that tend to foster bacteria and bugs. I remind everybody that the farm market is going on every Saturday morning. It's the peak of the summer season coming in, so the Pleasantville Farm Market down in Memorial Plaza, 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on every Saturday. And I also wanted to let people know that we started our meeting today and work session at 5:30 today earlier than we normally do because we devoted a couple of hours to preliminary discussion about master planning and economic development for the Village of Pleasantville. You'll hear lots more about this in the coming weeks and months as we put together a plan as well as a community engagement plan to talk to all of you about what kinds of things you envision ought to happen or would be desirable for the Village of Pleasantville in the next 20 and 30, five and 10 and 20 and 30 years from now. But it will also drive submissions on our part about how we might think about changing some zoning laws and how we might craft a new comprehensive plan called the Village Master Plan, which is a legally required document. The one we have in place right now was done in 1995. A piece of it was updated in 2007, but it's definitely long in the tooth. So if you're interested in the subject of master planning, that master plan is actually on the, the old master plan is on the website at pleasantville-ny.gov. You can click into the Planning Commission and then click on the Documents section and take a look at it. It will remind you, as we are all reminded, that it's time to rethink that and to come up with a document that is more current to the times as well as, I think, a more, a clearer description of what we all view as a vision for future development in our community. So crafting that vision is our responsibility, but our responsibility within pit from all of you, and we'll have lots more to say about that in the coming weeks and months. If it's a subject that interests you, I encourage you to go back to that website, pleasantville-ny.gov, and click on Subscribe to News. A whole bunch of categories you can choose. One of them is to get Village Board agendas in your email on a biweekly basis, which will give you an opportunity to see what we're discussing. That's a great way to stay in touch with issues that are coming up and also to perk up your ears if there's a subject on the agenda that's of particular interest to you. Obviously, we'll have other kinds of outreach when we are in the midst of this, but it's a great way to stay on top of what's going on.
The master plan is actually on the Planning Commission page in the PDF form. You don't have to go to any other section, Documents or whatever.
Anybody else have announcements?
I do. The Pleasantville Swim Team won their championship in Division III.
Yes.
And they sent 14 kids to All-Stars, which was phenomenal, and most of them were eight-and-unders.
That's good.
Yes. And we had, for 14 kids to go to All-Stars, that was our biggest showing in, ever, I think.
Long time.
Yes, because usually there's just like three or four kids, but we sent a number of relays, and kids from those relays also swam individual events. And in order to go to All-Stars, you have to win your event in championships. We won championships, I think only by like five points or so, but we won. And 14 kids went to All-Stars, and one child actually won in All-Stars, and that was an eight-and-under, Sunell Zorgman.
Right.
She's following in the footsteps of her brothers, who have also won consistently at All-Stars over the years. So congratulations to them.
Congratulations to all. Great news. Other announcements? All right. Any comments from the public who might be here in the room or want to call in at 769-1677? Nobody leaping to the occasion. With that, we will go to the first item on our agenda, which is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open a public hearing on a local law amending Chapter 173, Vehicles and Traffic? Section 173-60, Parking Prohibited at All Times, Hobby Street on the North Side from Marble Avenue West for 100 feet.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Welcome to the public hearing. Patty, you want to describe the plan?
We were asked to look at this in the Public Safety Committee as well because we have some conflicts in that area with cars traveling out of that particular section of Hobby Street onto Marble Avenue, and cars parking too close to the intersection. So the recommendation came back that we pull parking back 100 feet from the intersection so there's better sightlines. There's a lot of conflicts with the driveways from the gas station on that corner, as well as some driveways from the businesses that are on Marble Avenue that back up on the opposite side. So for safety's sake, this is really only affecting two or three parking spaces. It may seem like a long distance, but there weren't that many with all of the curb cuts and other things going on there.
Any further comment from the board? Any comments from the public? Come on up. Welcome to, we need you to give us your name and address, and happy to hear from you.
We did invite all the residents of Hobby Street, by the way. And SAC 58 Hobby Street.
Thank you.
Another concern is people are starting to park on the road when you come down Cooley Street and make the turn to go to Marble Avenue.
Okay.
Right there on the corner.
Okay, we'll look at that as well.
And it's a very busy area, and a lot of cars go through that street.
Parking on the, as you make the turn towards Marble, turn on the left side?
If I'm coming down Cooley Street, you turn left, they're parking right on the corner, on the road.
It's hard to see.
Right.
On the inside corner.
Yes. So on the outside, so they're making the right, they're making the left turn, and there were no, that lane.
Right.
Pushing them over.
The red one.
They would be parking, no, on the street.
Across the street, they're over there.
On the street. Because they're allowed to.
So over here.
Yes.
All right, well, so based on that, we'll take a look.
So that creates a very big problem, because then they come in the other lane and then...
Right.
So then you're really squeezed, right?
That's off-road parking that they have in front of their homes.
They do have it.
Yeah. But they're parking in front of the off-road.
Well, see, this person's put...
Yes, so I'm not talking about in front of the house. I'm talking on the street.
Yeah, on the road. I see what you're saying, yeah.
So I know on Cooley Street, I saw one-hour parking or signs like that.
I thought parking was prohibited on that side of the road. It's not?
I don't know.
Because that's all parking, that's, I don't know who established that.
So Patty on the right side.
So I'm going up Cooley, I'm at the stop sign, and you're looking to the right.
No, if you look straight ahead.
You're going down Cooley Street.
Yeah.
You're going to take a left to Marble Avenue.
All along that right side, on the road.
There is some parking allowed there.
Yeah. All right, so thank you for that.
We'll have to look at that.
We'll take a look at that.
And you're at 58?
I'm at 58.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take a look at that.
Thanks for coming, too.
Sounds like we may have another public hearing on the subject of parking on Hobby somewhere else. So if there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call in favor? Aye. Okay, that public hearing is closed, and we have a resolution on for that subject. Before we go to the resolutions, I'm reminded by this that I've received a number of comments and questions about the recent change that was made in signs at the one-lane railroad bridge under the Metro North tracks on Sunnyside Avenue. If you're a regular watcher of these meetings, you've probably already heard about this, but the circumstance we have is that, yes, it wounds us that we're not more popular. For many, many years, there was a stop sign on both sides of the one-lane railroad bridge, and you were required by those signs to stop. That arrangement, despite the fact that it, from my standpoint, has worked well for many, many years, was challenged by a resident who said that those are not legal stop signs, that that isn't appropriate place for a stop sign. So some investigation in the exciting document, the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices put out by the federal government, and at some taxpayer expense to have a traffic engineer take a look at it, the circumstance has been revised so that we no longer have stop signs on both sides of the Sunnyside Bridge. If I were king and made the rules, we wouldn't have had to change it, but none of us make the rules, and the federal government guidelines are such that the arrangement we have now there is consistent with the federal guidelines, and we're not allowed to have stop signs there. So you can recognize that it was not a change that we sought to make, but we were challenged on it and forced to revise it for that purpose.
Is all the signage up now? Because the last time I was through there, I've gotten a couple of phone calls or face-to-face complaints myself, and mostly it was the, how dangerous it was. Now, the stop signs made it less dangerous. I can't help but agree. However, we're not in that situation. But I do remember when we were going through this process, we were talking about the sign saying this is a one-lane bridge merged oncoming, or yield to oncoming traffic on the one side, Sunnyside side was the side that...
Yeah, because there was room there.
Did that Sunnyside side have the right-of-way?
It signed the way our traffic...
Told us to do it?
Yeah.
They're all up now?
They're all up.
Because the last time I was up there, one of them was not up. And we were supposed to have lines that showed the, you know, how you're yielding.
The lines are there.
The lines are there.
Okay.
I will say, I find the yellow lines a little bit confusing. You approach, you have to cross a double-yellow line in order to go under the bridge from the, when you're heading towards Marble Avenue.
Right.
And I find those yellow lines, I mean, it's not confusing because there's a tunnel, you have to go through the tunnel, but like, it seems like the line is driving you to go straight into the wall and then to cross the double-yellow line in order to go through the tunnel.
If you'd like Bugs Bunny, draw the tunnel on the other side.
We have...
That was Winky Dick, I think.
No, no, it was Road Runner.
We believe we fulfill the requirements that the regulations permit, and we have the advice of a traffic engineer that we're following, and it falls into the category about of...
That's good. We unanimously don't like it.
Yeah, exactly. So it wasn't our idea, but bigger issues are in play. So with that, let's go to the resolutions, number 140, Steve.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves a local law amending Chapter 173, Vehicles and Traffic. Section 173-60, Parking Prohibited at All Times as follows, on Hobby Street on the North Side from Marble Avenue West for 100 feet.
Is there a second?
Second.
This obviously is the resolution that follows the public hearing we just had. Any further comment? Call in favor? Aye. Motion approved.
Resolved at the Pre-Check Register dated August 10, 2015, covering electronic check numbers 223, 222, through, I should say, too many twos, 2283, and pre-check numbers 81228 through 81336 have been reviewed, and they are hereby approved as listed below in the record to cover the General Fund, Water Fund, Capital Fund, Refuge Fund, Pool Fund, to total $299,189.75.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the check register?
There was something in there for water meter purchases. Can you just, it was like $27,000?
We go through a replacement program, and we've been doing it historically, and that was just a purchase that we got to restock our water meters.
They came to my house. Can you tell me? Sorry, I'm just, I'm not there, I'll call.
We'll find you.
That has most of the audit in it, right?
Sorry?
The audit. The audit expenses are in there, right? I think I saw something for...
They should be. I don't know if they build that quickly. They just finished last, maybe it can be in, they just finished last week.
I think they are. What about the counting for the music festival? I saw the, a lot of the ones...
We have more checks coming in this week, so we're almost there.
Next meeting, maybe?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Actually, yes, probably before that, but...
Okay. All in favor of the check register?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, July 27, 2015, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the minutes? Good opportunity to remind everyone the happy report that our bond rating of AA2 was reaffirmed by Moody's, which is a very strong rating for a community of our size. Joe?
143 is a long resolution, but I'm going to read the whole thing because it's not that long.
And worth doing, I think.
And worth doing. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following resolution. Whereas plastic bags are often discarded into the environment and end up polluting our waterways, clogging sewers, endangering marine life, and causing unsightly litter that lasts hundreds of years and are potential sources of harmful chemicals when they do break down. And whereas the Village of Pleasantville supports responsible environmental stewardship, and whereas the Westchester County Board of Legislators is considering an ordinance that would prohibit the use of single-use plastic bags and expanded polystyrene containers at the point of sale throughout Westchester County, and whereas the ordinance being considered would encourage the use of reusable bags and other recyclable and biodegradable products, and whereas it will be most effective to have the county-wide policy regulating plastic bag distribution at the point of sale in expanded polystyrene containers rather than a piecemeal approach that would be different in each municipality. And whereas, while all county residents would realize the environmental benefits of such a program, Village of Pleasantville would realize benefits of reduced debris in its streets, landscapes, stormwater systems, and streams, as well as improved water quality and waterways countywide, and whereas those efforts undertaken on a regional level that will have positive impacts for the region as a whole and for the Village of Pleasantville, now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Pleasantville urges the Westchester County, I'm sorry, urges Westchester County to adopt a law which would ban the use of single-use plastic bags at the point of sale and expanded polystyrene containers, and be it further resolved, the Village of Pleasantville requests that the village clerk forward a certified copy of this resolution to the Clerk of Westchester County Board of Legislators and to Westchester County Executive Robert P. Astorino.
Is there a second?
Second.
This comes to us through our Pleasantville Recycles Committee and the efforts of County legislator Catherine Parker, who has been behind the discussion of a ban on single-use bags and expanded polystyrene at the county level as described here. Action has not been taken at the county board, but legislator Parker is interested in statements of support from communities throughout the county. So we have that before us today, and it is, it is my view that we should support this effort. There are plenty of discussions one can have about the environmental impacts of the alternatives to plastic bags, and clearly, every alternative has an environmental impact. My personal opinion is that rather than getting too focused on which form of waste is worse, we should get very focused collectively as a community and as a county, and indeed as a society, on reducing waste in general, and certainly using reusable bags is the key way to do that at the consumer level when going to stores. And so this strikes me as an appropriate gesture to push the needle towards that throughout the county. Anybody else have any other comments, or?
Well, I'm, I'm a no on this, you guys know that, but, you know, at a certain point, I think that people have to take personal responsibility for things. I personally take these issues very seriously, but I think they significantly impact the businesses in the Village of Pleasantville, and I just don't want to do, don't want to have our businesses affected in this way. With that being said, with this resolution, Andrea, thank you very much, Garberini, you handed out a fact sheet that I take issue with because I did some fact checking, and there are a lot of statements on here that are from lobby groups that do this kind of thing, that, you know, we're depleting the natural resources, it causes flooding, it causes toxins in our food chains. But the thing I take issue with the most is that recycling isn't an effective option. And I think that's counterintuitive to our recycling committee and the people in this village that do recycle, and it does make an impact, and it has been effective. And I think we could see that through the numbers we get back from the county. We don't use landfills in Westchester County. We, as you know, you've been to the MERC, but the EPA is very supportive of the efforts we've taken, and they are very pro-recycling. So I would, you know, be careful what you put out there to our residents that, you know, I have a lot of respect for the recycling that we've done in this village, and I would be careful about the information that you put out there. So that's my comments.
Comment from the public here? Christine, if you could give us your name and address for the record?
My name is Christine Simonogrislow. I live in Pleasantville, 16 West Cora Avenue. I just want to say, I think the headline was perhaps misleading. It is not effective in a way that is, it is not a commodity that as you take glass or aluminum or other resources that are recycled and sell them. We sell them, for example, internationally or domestically. Plastic bags in general are of no value, and therefore are, even though you recycle them, cannot be reused, most of them will not be reused. Because they're dirty.
They'll be melted down and turned into something else.
Yes, I mean, you can go down to New York City, we actually, there are movies or on YouTube, you can find that information as well, where they're bailed, but people count, the information is from those people who bail them, say that they're useless, you know, they're, we cannot use them, we cannot recycle them, they're not turned into new plastic bags or into plastic lumber or, you know, whatever you want to do with it, it's just not possible, like with glass, for example, or other plastics that are recyclable into something new. That is an issue with plastic bags. Yes, we do want them out of the environment, and therefore the recycling of it, please do recycle them, bring them to the stores. Of course, we do not want, we do not want to burn them, but I think the notion that plastic bags are endlessly being able to be recycled into something new is just a myth. It's just not there.
Well, there's other facts. I understand what you're saying, but there are other facts, but what, what you're also talking about in this legislation is to use heavier plastic bags, and I don't think that's the answer either. I mean, I think that, you know, we can debate this until the cows come home, but, but the idea that, you know, to make a statement like this, and the headline is wrong, and I'll accept that from you.
Yeah, I think it's not right.
And I think that there's a lot of other sciences, but I just, I don't, when you put out a fact sheet, they should be facts, and they shouldn't be misleading to the public or to our businesses here. So, you know, when, and we also broaden the scope of this to include polystyrene. Our community never had a discussion about that, and I, I'm not, you know, I'm one vote, and I know everybody else feels differently than me, but, you know, when I'm, when I'm thinking of that, I'm thinking right off the top of my head, the four businesses on Wheeler Avenue alone that this will affect. So, so I, you know, it's just, these are things that, you know, I could think of a lot of other things that cause flooding in the Village of Pleasantville. Plastic bags is not one of them. So, you know, to, to make these statements with, you know, that are used by a lot of groups without, you know, if you go on the EPA website, they have a lot of different things to say about plastic bags.
I understand, but I think that fact sheet was not pertaining to Pleasantville only.
Well, it was given to this board with the information to pass this resolution.
Well, the resolution also states, however, that this is in order to support the Westchester County effort in reducing, in reducing plastic bag litter. So I think in that terms that it creates stormwater issues in terms of clogging up drains. I think in that regard, it is not wrong, it is a fact.
Good. Except your... Thank you.
I just wanted to say, you know, I think there are times when convenience trumps thoughtfulness. And I am somebody that was really new to recycling before I served on the board. Actually, I was thinking about when Steve did our debate, and he asked me a question about recycling, and I held my breath because it just wasn't what I've done, and this recycling committee has really educated me. But sometimes we need to start somewhere, and we need, you know, sort of to be directed. And as much as I want to use my bags, if the plastic bags are in the grocery store, I use them, and if they weren't, I wouldn't. So as I said, sometimes I think convenience trumps thoughtfulness, and I think this is a great start. It's not the answer to every recycling problem, but I think it's a wonderful start, and I thank all of you for, you know, educating all of us and for making a real impact here in the village. Thank you.
Let me also say that the Recycling Committee has been talking to us for quite a while about a plastic bag ban, and there's been discussion about doing it within the Village of Pleasantville, just as an individual community, as some other Westchester communities have done. And they and I have engaged in an outreach with a number of local stores, including Key Food, which is obviously the biggest user of single-use plastic bags in the community. And I can report from that meeting that Key Food is sympathetic to the overall goals, understands the issues. One of their significant concerns was whether a set of rules and regulations would apply to them and not to their nearby competitors in other communities. And from my standpoint, the idea of a consistent rule throughout the county goes a long way towards resolving that problem so that our individual businesses are not affected in any disproportionate way in comparison to anybody else. And I would also say that although there certainly are people who think in various different ways on this subject, I would say the general sense, the significant majority sense from Pleasantville retail operators is that they can accommodate this kind of a change if it were to come down the pike. So I also caution you that what we're proposing tonight is simply a statement of support for the idea that the county pursue this and come up with something. It does not presage a specific set of regulations which would get worked out at the county level. So any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion approved. 144, Steve.
All right, so this is a little longer as well, but I'll read the whole thing. Whereas the Board of Trustees awarded a bid for janitorial services on July 27, 2015, to Fullerton Service Industries Bedford, New York, in the amount of $3,840 per month. And whereas Fullerton Service Industries has notified the Village of Pleasantville that they made an error in their bid calculations and cannot perform the duties as specified in the bid specifications, so now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby rescinds the award for janitorial services to Fullerton Services, Service Industries of Bedford, New York. And further resolves, further resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby awards the bid to the next lowest bidder, Able Building Supply, Services, sorry, 280 Madison Avenue, New York, New York, in the... 280 Madison Avenue, New York, New York, in the amount of $4,129 per month, and further resolve that the award is subject to the submission and approval of insurance certificates and assigned contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe what went on here?
Yeah, I think the resolution covers, covers it quite well. We were notified by the principal of Fullerton just last week that he could no longer perform under the contract due to an accounting error that he made in the contract. He was only one week into it, so we will pay him for that week, and we will move on. We've already contacted the second lowest bidder. He's confident he can sign the contracts and deliver the insurance, so we'll be, we'll be back to normal soon.
Do we have any color on what the accounting error was?
Not really.
Do we care?
I mean, we...
Whoops, I'm a little lower than... Yeah, well, that's not going to work. I just wonder, I mean, we went through the contract process.
You can't withdraw a bid for that reason. It has to be another reason, so...
That's what I thought.
Procurement policy would not allow you.
I mean, you know, legally, we can, we can hold him to the bid. It really makes no sense to do that.
Right, it doesn't.
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm just...
But, but, you know, once they execute the contract, which he did, we can hold him to that, but it would just reflect on the level of service we'd be getting, so...
Right.
It's just, I think we're in a better position now to move forward.
And we're confident that Abel will not...
We had Abel here many years ago. We think that they did an adequate job, and, you know, we're looking forward to having them back.
And we don't think they'll run into whatever the same problem was?
Hopefully not.
All right. Happy to take your advice on that subject. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 145, Colleen.
Didn't Steve just read it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I? Mindy, sorry.
I'm just sitting here waiting for you, Colleen.
That's right.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department to use Soldiers and Stallers Field on Sunday, September 20, 2015, to hold their annual clam bake event.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we received a letter from the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department asking to hold this clam bake, which is an annual thank you for their members and their families, and happy to oblige, accept the question of whether there'd be any potential conflict with sports.
We need a time. We need a time. And a time meaning when they're going to come to set up.
And be done, right? When they think they'll be carried down.
Well, I'm sure it'll go to the evening, but yeah, if we could get a time.
So subject, as long as there are no conflicts, we're okay with the date?
Right, right. And happy to try to work it out, whatever the conflicts are. We just need to make sure that...
Do we have soccer going on there?
Yes, but we can...
Should be able to work around it.
I don't, I don't think there's soccer on that field in the fall.
There is, but there may not be, like, in the afternoon.
I think it's early.
Yeah, it's the younger kids, yeah.
Well, so hopefully that'll work out fine, but it sounds like it can be worked out, so as long as the mover and the second are happy with the addition of, you know, consistent with working out the schedule. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Now, Colleen?
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the following donations to the Clinton Street Senior Center from Pace University, a 60-inch Panasonic TV and seven Dell computers.
Wow.
Thank you, Case.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great news, really a very happy piece of news from Joni Ehrlich down at the Clinton Street Center, going to set up a computer lab.
That's great.
So that's a big step forward in terms of our technology infrastructure at the Senior Center. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And second everything Colleen said, thanks so much for Pace University and our contribution here. That is the last of our resolutions for tonight. Is there any new business or further comments from the public? We will continue in work session. Is there a motion to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Good night. We will see you again in two weeks.